Did you now?
I just want to let you know.
I appreciate that.
It's raining, huh? It'll stop.
Hello there, how is you? Hanging in, I'm glad to hear it. You too. Hanging in? Hanging in. Oh, you won't miss the meeting though, right? Oh, okay, that's all I care about.
Well, unless it's a special.
No, there's. You're gonna miss a meeting, that's the only one I like to make.
Six o'clock, I'll call this stated session of city council order, please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge of flag. Tonight as we meet, let us pray for those who have contracted the coronavirus, especially the recent rise in the variant strands. Let us also pray for the safety and protection for those particularly vulnerable and for those experiencing mental disturbance, fear and anxiety. Let us also praise those facing the difficult decisions between food on their table or rent or for their prescription medicines. When we discuss the funds available through the American Rescue Plan, give us the wisdom to appropriate those funds to those that need it the most and the uses that makes us a better city for all, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Edinger?
Here.
Mr. Milan?
Here.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Dr. Ruggles?
Here.
Mrs. Volcano?
Here.
Mayor Pinto?
Here.
Approval of the agenda?
Moved.
Second. Moved in second, any additions or deletions, corrections, I'd like to add seven A. A presentation by Professor Melonconico and his students on the community gardens vegetable giveaway on Tenth and Pine. And then move into our seven B would be the public hearing on proposed zoning amendments.
Mayor, can I make a request?
Sure.
Um, for the zoning amendments, um, I went through them and I didn't think they were that exhausted, um, complex, so can we just introduce them tonight?
I don't have a problem with that.
Would Mr. O'Connell want to do that then?
I'm sorry, I can't.
I asked the mayor if it would be okay, if we had no issues with the zoning amendments, could we just introduce them tonight? They weren't that exhaustive, exhausting.
I don't have anything prepared, though.
You can't say a public comment, the public here, his, um, presentation had a bill to it.
I'm sorry, what?
Add an ordinance to introduce.
I, I don't have anything.
Okay, that's fine.
To introduce, that's what I'm saying, because I talked to Mr. Narowski and they said, he said they weren't introducing him tonight.
Okay, it's fine.
Okay, I'll move that, move the changes.
Not mine, no, mayor.
No, not yours.
If you don't mind, she doesn't have it, then I'm not gonna, I'll wait.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second it.
Moved in second, roll call Madam Clerk on the amendment. So that Mr. Melonconico doesn't have to wait.
Mr. Pinto?
Uh, here, aye.
Volcano?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. Edinger?
Aye.
And then we have to, we have, um, Ms. Volcano and Mr. O'Connell who moved in second to approve the agenda.
Roll call.
Mr. Edinger?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Pinto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Mayor Pinto, who's, may I ask again, is giving the presentation?
Um, Mr. Professor Larry Melonconico from Lafayette and his students, Larry, you wanna come up?
Just so I can get his name ahead of time.
Lawrence Malinconico.
Did you spell your last name?
M A L.
I'm sorry.
M A L.
Uh huh.
I N. C O.
We'll do the next.
N I. V O.
And it's for, what's your presentation about?
So we're gonna just, um, it's an invitation and a brief presentation on our vegetables in the community program at Tenth and Pine in the West Ward.
Thank you.
Ready to go?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, we have to.
We'll do the minutes first.
We'll do the next, we'll do the next, we got one thing before.
We'll do, we'll do them after he's done, go ahead, Mr. Melonconico, you can go. Students are in a hurry to get back.
Um, I'm gonna let the students do the primary talking in this, this is just a brief update on where we stand and there's gonna be an invitation to all of you to come, join us at the stand sometime in the next five weeks. So the students will introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Konstantin Dubishtar, I'm a rising senior at Lafayette College, majoring in geology and economics and I'm actually from Easton.
Could you spell your name, please?
C O N S T A N T I N. D U B I S T H A R.
Okay.
And I'm Sharon Engel, I'm also a rising senior, I'm from Williamsport, Pennsylvania, uh, I'm double majoring in environmental studies and anthropology.
And could you spell your last, your name, please?
Uh, Sharon, S H A R O N.
And your last name?
E N G E L.
I'm sorry.
E N G E L.
Thank you.
Yeah, so with the V I C stand, we're on track to meet the average of eight to nine thousand pounds of food delivered this season and serving fifty to sixty families per week, and this is done with the contributions from Lafayette College through La Farm, uh, Eastern Urban Farm in Southside and the Eastern Farm at South Hackett. And over the years, the veggie stand has grown to include activity stands from the YMCA of Easton and Eastern Garden Works.
Um, yeah, so we were just here to let you guys know that we have five weeks left of the program and to kind of invite you to come out anytime in those next five weeks on Thursdays. On Thursdays, uh, we start at five thirty, set up, set up at four thirty, in case anyone didn't hear what I had just said. Uh, we have five weeks left of the program, um, it happens on Thursday evenings, starting at five thirty and we go till seven. Um, and, yeah, you're all welcome to come next week, this week, tomorrow is Thursday.
Might suggest next week, tomorrow's gonna be a scorcher.
Mm-hmm. Yes, it will be, well, I, I've been out there and, uh, I will probably see you next Thursday, not tomorrow night, I have a meeting, but, um, it is absolutely amazing and as part of the American Recovery Plan, Rescue Plan, rather, uh, that I present to city council tonight, it's just a preliminary budget. Um, we still don't have final rulings on what we can use the money for, but one of the things we can use it for is the prevention of homelessness and for people like community gardens. Uh, so I do have, I think, a fifty thousand dollar grant to help the community gardens become a little bit more structured, a little bit more, um. But you are all volunteers, I think, uh, a couple of people may, may need to be a director or something, and it just, the community gardens give away thousands of pounds of food every year to our, to our needy. And I think that is something that the American Rescue Plan wants to help, so, um, there is a fifty thousand dollar grant towards the community gardens in the, in the, in the preliminary budget. Ultimately, it'll be city council making a decision on how the money's spent, but, um, I wish it could be more, but you'd be surprised, twenty million dollars doesn't go far. When you've already lost over six million dollars of revenue from the city, so six million of that, twenty million goes right to the city, so.
Well, as you're, as you're considering it, I, that's why, one of the reasons we wanted to invite you down to see exactly what we do and chat with the people who've come through. This year in particular, they've been remarkably thankful, uh, you know, for the efforts we've been doing.
We do have.
We did go all the way through last year as well.
I mean, we have businesses who are, like, when I go out Thursdays to, um, the Paxos Elementary School where Tucker's Restaurant from Simon Silk Mill donates bags and bags and bags of produce, fresh produce for people, and I see them there and I think that's just the kind of things we should be doing. So I, I appreciate the students from Lafayette College, and we hear a lot of things about students at Lafayette College, but we have a lot of good things that go on. Uh, whether it's mentoring kids at the community center or Boys and Girls Club, helping out at Paxos Community School, or growing food to give away to people, all that is, I just want you to know that we're very thankful. Now, were you out there for, uh, National Night Out?
We, we were not, we do, we do Thursdays and it's quite a tour, quite honestly, for us to get set up, because Thursday nights there was produce from the, um, the Southside Urban Farm, that is part of that.
Okay.
However, so we'll come back in October, early November and give you a final report on this season as well, like we've been doing. So, and there's some extra cards, if anybody wants to take them, just about our Facebook page and Instagram page, where we post our notices.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Hugh. Uh, we'll go into the action in the minutes of our stated session on July twenty-eighth.
I'll move the minutes. Second.
Move the second, any additions, deletions or corrections? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Uh, staying.
Oh, that, I'm sorry about that. Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Pinto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Edinger?
Aye.
At this time, Mr. Narowski will do the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can't recognize me without my mask, with my mask on.
Yeah, give us your name and your address, because we don't know who you are.
I know who you are.
Relatively new here. All right, so, um, following our last zoning amendment, so last year, through the codification process, a few, uh, reference points were missed, uh, which got flagged for correction as part of this process. Um, and, and there were some other small changes, for example, um, we added chiropractic service to the definition of medical services, uh, to clean up that confusion with professional services. Uh, in the individual zoning different districts that have a street corridor overlay, there would be some new permitted uses that didn't have dimensional criteria that, um, just had to be added. It was a, an outcome of the zoning amendments previously. Uh, and then one other big portion, which is relatively negligible, it clarified fencing requirements as far as, uh, how the fence is installed, typically, you know, a, as most people know, the nice side, right? The nice side faces out, um, things like that. Also, um, set the standards based on where fence height is measured, you know, from what ground height, so, you know, on a slope or something, you know, i- if you measure from the inside, you could end up with an eight-foot fence on the downside of the fence, things like that. So, th- there were some small clarifications with regard to that. Uh, then additionally, in the sign section, uh, we've added, uh, large temporary development signs, something that wasn't previously covered in our zoning ordinance. For example, Fourth Street with, um, the Seville, how they have that signage on the fencing, we all know that's temporary, it's advertised, the product, it wasn't covered under our old zoning ordinance. So this would incorporate it and allow, uh, and set standards for that type of signage. Uh, and then the biggest change perhaps would be the permission to have neon signs downtown with historic district commission approval only. For example, Pearlie Baker's, under our current regulations, their sign is illegal, but in some cases, especially in our district, neon signs would be historically appropriate, so that cleans up those, uh, that slight conflict. Uh, that's truly the crux of our zoning amendments. Any questions?
For Mr. Narowski? Thank you, Stephen, um, Councilman Milan wanted to introduce it tonight, I have no problem with that, um, but the clerk, um, if we, we could actually do it with just a, it's just an ordinance and use yours as an attachment A, which we already have in the minutes, or in the packet.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think it's fine, um.
Oh, I'm, I saw it from Stephen, I, I thought they were in the packet.
It, it is not, is it not in the packet now?
No, it's not in the packet.
No.
Oh, okay.
So maybe, we will wait, we will wait.
Okay. Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Members of the public, if there's any person who would make, like to make a comment on agenda items only, now is the time, if not, there's a time at the end of the, uh, uh, agenda to, uh, make a comment about anything. Okay, uh, moving on to consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
Uh, excuse me, Mayor, um, are you planning to introduce the ordinance tonight?
No.
Okay, so that, that's fine, because.
I didn't realize, I saw that when Mr. Narowski sent them to me, I didn't realize they weren't in the packet.
Okay, because, yeah, I, I believe we would really need to have advertised.
Yeah, we didn't advertise it, right?
That, that was going to be on the agenda for action tonight, as in ordinance, thank you.
Mayor, something came up with Lancaster, um.
Oh, no, I know, the new law, the new right to know laws, uh, sunshine law requires anything that's gonna be acted on must be advertised.
Yep.
So that, yeah.
Okay.
Consent agenda?
Yep.
We had Bill twenty-eight that was introduced by Mr. Brown, which would amend the fee schedule, there was an error in the sewer section of two eighty-five twenty that was caught, so this ordinance will, um, correct that. And then there was also Bill number twenty-nine introduced by Mr. Brown, um, amending the two thousand twenty-one recreation fund budget.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Edinger?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Pinto?
Aye. There are no reports to be received by council, we'll move reports to the committees, finance committee, Vice Mayor Brown.
Uh, thank you, ma'am, I have no report, but I would like to say that, uh, although this year's, uh, National Night Out was small, it was, it was nice, I think everyone, all four of them did a wonderful job. Uh, the community really got out there behind them. And so I, I enjoyed myself out there, just being around the community, so, real nice night out.
It was a great night. Economic Development Committee, um, Councilmember Volcano?
I have no reports this evening, thank you.
Planning and Coach Committee, Councilman O'Connell?
No report, Mayor.
Public Safety Committee, Councilman Ruggles?
I have no report.
Public Works Committee, Council Edinger?
I have no report tonight, Mayor, I will, however, be introducing Bill number thirty and also a resolution approving a contract with M.J. Reader Associates.
Okay, Administration Committee, Councilmember Milan?
No report, Mayor.
You had a great festival this weekend, but.
We did, actually.
It was a really good festival.
It was, it was fun.
Thank God it wasn't tonight, man, or tomorrow night, um, reporter, city solicitor, Mr. Shear?
Um, I just want to follow up, at the last meeting I had mentioned about the Wilson Borough Warehouse matter, uh, that's scheduled, that was to be continued to August twenty-four. Uh, from a call I received from the applicant, it's my impression that they're actually gonna withdraw that application for now. Uh, there's a dispute going on with an adjacent property owner and I think they feel they need to get that resolved. So, um, if anybody is interested, I suggest you check with Wilson Borough to determine it, but I just want to let people know that it's, seems unlikely that it'll be, uh, on there. And I have no other report, but Mr. R, Dr. Ruggles has a question.
I just had a question, uh, on a legal aspect of things for that particular project. Um, the property itself lies within Easton and Wilson, and, and I, I was just wondering, as far as zoning is concerned, would they have to go through our zoning also because the property is in Easton?
The, the, the actual warehouse, the val, the warehouse, uh, uh, project itself is within, totally contained within the alleged borough of Wilson, not considering the annexation of a hundred years ago. Um, so, so that, and, and they've been made aware of that cloud, whatever, whatever it's worth. What may well happen is they may need permits that would extend to Easton, not necessarily zoning, but there are, there's gonna be land disturbance on the pro, adjacent property that's within the city.
I thought one of their, I thought one of their zoning variances they were seeking from, for flooding, was for flooding and for, um, the, the, um, setback of the detention base.
Yeah, they, they have, they're, they have areas of relief that they're seeking from Wilson that may vary, if it impacts the Easton, Easton property and they don't get the permission from us, they're gonna have a problem.
Yeah.
So they're gonna have to figure that out themselves.
Okay. I'm, I'm. Well, I, that was the thing, I saw the flooding and I was like, that has to be, they're asking for a variance on, on flooding and that has to be Easton, that, that.
Well, there's no question.
That side of the property is Easton.
There's no question in my mind that their overall project impacts adjacent land within the city of Easton.
When I was with a developer, we did GJ Mills, it was in four municipalities, and the only thing in Forks Township was the other side of the bridge on the Mittman Road, Bushkill Drive, we, no building was over there, but we still needed the, uh, approval of their zoning and, and planning commission.
Well, it, I, 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 at this mo, moment in time, I think they're, they're, I guess they're taking it one step at a time.
Okay.
And, and, and that's the only thing I can say, and they're dealing with the use issue to begin with, but it, you know, they have a ton of special exceptions and objections, a- and I actually just read the objections that have been formally filed from the adjacent owner. And it's, it's a good, it's a really good outline for anyone who wants to object to the project without any evidence presented yet at the zoning hearing board and maybe not going to be presented.
Mr. Shear's also, we're gonna bring up the, um, traffic study that's required, it hasn't been done.
Yeah, the major traffic study is one of the prerequisites for a special exception, and it hasn't been done yet, and the attitude had been, seemed to me that, well, we could just make a condition on that, well, it doesn't, how do you make a consideration unless you've read the report? So that, that would, that was my, when I came a month ago, that was going to be my major point, that, uh, because, because the, because obvious concern I expressed last time, which is, I, I don't even know to what extent, they're, they're relying on PennDOT that seems to borrow. And I don't know that you can rely on PennDOT, when, when we're worried about behavior of, of, uh, drivers and, and finding these trucks wandering around the, the streets of West.
If you recall, PennDOT, in their most recent changes to Thirteenth Street interchange, no longer permit, permits coming off the eastbound twenty-two at Thirteenth Street to make a left. So what happens is these trucks have to get off Twenty-Fifth Street, come down Wood Avenue. Well, that's fine, but the GPS is gonna tell them to get off of Thirteenth Street, and when they get off of Thirteenth Street, they can't get to their warehouse, they're gonna come through the neighborhood and around College Hill and everywhere else trying to get to the.
And their one-way sign's still there, Mayor.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so we'll move on to, anything else, Mr. Shear?
No, no other report.
Under my report, I just want to mention that our ecotourism has really taken off, we have the kayaking lease on the agenda tonight, we have a gentleman who runs, uh, kayaking, uh, he lives on College Hill. And then downtown, we have the tubing company, the Two Rivers Tubing, who's renting, uh, the former, um, police station at the old Pine Street Garage for two years. This past Sunday, they're, they've been, they've had over six hundred tubers every, every weekend, but this weekend, they had six hundred twenty-one tubers and they've been tracking where they're, who's staying in Easton to spend money. And, uh, five hundred seventy-four stayed in the city to eat and drink, so, um, we're very excited, this is a really reputable tubing, tubing company. Not only do they take the person to the Frost Hollow overlooking where they get all, into the river, they have a boat out in the river, a safety boat with duly marked, making sure everything's good and make sure, um, people that need any assistance have their assistance. Also, um, we are debating, uh, with Mr. Shear again this morning and Mr., uh, Clark, the policy that we have about masks, um, and what we're gonna do about outdoor events, uh, right now, our outdoor events are still scheduled. Uh, you may hear that, um, on channel sixty-nine, they just did a big story on, uh, the mask policy that Mayor Kenny has implemented in Philadelphia, where you must wear a mask inside the restaurant and even at a Eagles game outside, in the outside. We, we, I have no plans of doing that at the present time, um, people that don't want to come to the September fourth events don't have to, people that don't want to eat in a restaurant don't have to, they have that freedom to make their choice themselves. Um, I, I firmly believe in vaccinations, uh, I think the thirty percent should not dictate how the seventy percent of us that are vaccinated should, should react and act, but, um, that'll all be played out at a later date, I'm sure. And we will be checking every week the number of ICU beds available versus the spiking and making sure that, um, we, uh, I was asked today by the press if we were going to institute a, every employee must get, um, vaccinated as a condition of employment. Uh, I said no, uh, at this time, that's not our policy and I don't plan on implementing that policy, however, if you look at the three major health organizations in Lehigh Valley, St. Luke's Health, Lehigh Valley Health Network and Good Shepherd, they all just did that this week. So, um, we'll see, um, I don't know where that's, where it's headed. Um, I also want to say that the billboard about exploringeaston.com is up and there will be five more?
Um, Mayor, they're, they're rotating, uh, throughout the county, um, on Adam's digital billboard for a two-week period, uh, at their pro bono, um, plan, if you will. So, we have the one fixed, uh, billboard and then the other are just, are, are floating, so you're gonna see them around throughout the county.
Where's the fixed one?
On Twenty-Fifth Street.
On the one that we have.
Our, ours, the one that belongs to the city, on twenty-two and, twenty-two and twenty.
Right near the health center.
Right.
Eastern Health Center. Um, also, our service warrant, line warranty that protects people from having, uh, water or sewer breakage between the curb box and their house has been received very well, but unfortunately, there's another group out there knocking on doors, trying to get people to get all their utilities. That is not the city program, the city program obviously is just water and sewer, they're trying to get gas lines, electric lines, everything else, um, and they're doing it rather, um, heavy-handed. Um, also, I will let Mr. Campos, under his report, talk about the residential parking permit downtown and some things that went on that really shouldn't go on because city council didn't make a change in the ordinance. some things that went on that really shouldn't go on because city council didn't make a change in the ordinance. Um, and I was on a call today with, uh, President Biden and the mayors around the country about the infrastructure bill. And I will tell you that eleven point three billion, that's with a B, billion dollars is coming to Pennsylvania alone for the highway apportioned programs. And in addition to that, we have one point six billion dollars for bridge replacement. And we also have twelve and a half billion dollars that we could compete for in other areas. As far as the city's concerned, I think our biggest concern will be the, uh, North Six Eleven, which we would like to see PennDOT do. Um, we've had several sewer line breaks there, uh, which closes down that road. And as you know, that puts all the traffic, especially the truck traffic up over College Hill. Um, PennDOT says it's our responsibility. We're saying it's PennDOT's responsibility. Is a state highway protected by a guide rail that stops you from going into a waterway of the Commonwealth? That, to me, means that the state owns everything. And we've been fighting them for ten years now that they want us to put the, the, and it's, it's, it could be as much as a million or more dollars. We're budgeting in the ARPA money. We're looking to get it, the state grants from them to do this project, um, through the infrastructure bill. Um, there may be others, um, but for the most part, it's primarily that one. Um, and you will see, I will give out the ARPA preliminary budget. It's just very preliminary. Obviously, we haven't had any discussions with city council yet. We've had a number of discussions with, um, staff, trying to come up with how this money would be spent or at least appropriated. And the one thing I will say is that this money will not be appropriated. Um, just because it's appropriate doesn't mean it'll be spent. For example, in there, we have, um, two hundred thousand dollars. We know that parking is a real problem in the West Ward and South Side and College Hill. Um, not so much on College Hill, but certainly in West Ward and South Side. Uh, one of the ideas that I, this one happened to be mine, um, is that we give people money to put a parking pad in their rear yard, if they have a rear yard, and have access to it through an alleyway. Um, we would give them, low, moderate income people would get, would, would get a grant to do that, and, and wealthier people would get a zero percent interest loan to do that. Um, I don't know that that'll come to fruition. I don't even know if city council is gonna approve it, but right now, you see at the bottom of the total ARPA money is twenty point six, twenty million, six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, most of it, twelve point four is in next year. We do have our seven point nine million dollars this year, but most of the money, we need time to plan and, 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 and do that. Um, you will notice that we, we zeroed out the, uh, West Ward Community Center. However, we do have a funding source for that, which we can discuss later. Uh, we also had a utility bill assessment assistance program, which was going to help people who are really behind on their bills affected by COVID. They would get grants to pay their water bill and wastewater and trash bill off. Um, that one, we're not sure is still eligible, so we didn't appropriate that right now. We have, um, a million dollars in the bank for fire department upgrades to the facilities and for female firefighter accessibility improvements. Affordable housing, we're looking to put two point nine million dollars into an affordable housing program. We're working with one group to have fifty-three units on the South Side, but they're rental units. Um, the rest of this money would be used for, um, owner occupied, and we would work with banks because of their CRA, their Community Reinvestment Act, requires them to invest in, in, in housing. Um, also, uh, the community gardens I just mentioned tonight. Uh, one of the groups that has been very affected, I, I seen it just with my little one-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter. Uh, when she was born and COVID was just, I mean, she didn't leave the house. She only knew her mother and father, and I'll tell you what. She is just starting now to come out of her shell where she'll, she'll greet and meet and talk to people. Um, she's one, a little over one-and-a-half years old now. So youth mental health programs, we know that youth have been predominantly, um, affected, whether it be the schooling and not going to school, the socialization process. So we do have a hundred thousand dollars for that. And then we have all the small assistance grants, the mortgage assistance grants and rental assistance grants, which is eight hundred thousand dollars, which John Kingsley tells me we don't need because the county still has so much C-Med money, uh, that they can't give it away. So we want to make sure we at least advertise it. Um, in homelessness prevention, we're looking to build in addition to safe harbor to create more beds. Uh, and then we're also looking for giving grants to other shelters who are, um, taking care of our homeless. Also, along with the homelessness prevention, we're looking at public bathroom attendants. Right now, all of our public bathrooms have been closed because of vandalism and, and just downright, um, not maintaining them. So we would, would like to hire a person, part-time people to be there, um, to make sure the people who go in and come out, the place is still okay. Um, the biggest expenditure, of course, is replacing our money that was lost last year and the next three years. And that's about six point three million. That may change. And then stormwater projects, sanitary projects, we're looking at a million dollars each there. And stormwater projects, a hundred thousand dollars, just like rain gardens and bio swales and things that we need to do to meet our, um, obligations under the new stormwater program. And then we have a whole section on tourism development. Uh, we're looking to protect our historic structures, physical improvements to, um, some of them, uh, mostly city-owned properties that are tourist-related. Uh, Pine Street Garage emergency repairs are now done. Um, and I will say that, uh, city council has been very supportive. We do not, um, mess around. We got a report from the engineers. I signed that agreement a week before the tragedy in Miami. Um, we have a report that says you need to make emergency repairs. You make them. And a hundred thirty thousand dollars would have come out of the capital budget, but it's gonna come out of here for now. They're, they're at the welding stage now. The concrete has been done. They're welding this week. Uh, neighborhood and historic district signage, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it's sad that we don't even reflect. We do have a new sign going up at Thirteenth Street Interchange welcoming people to the West Ward. And we have a sign going up Smith Avenue welcoming people to the South Side. So those two are ordered, and they will be installed shortly. But this is for additional signage throughout. Um, there's need down at the, um, uh, canal and lock tender improvements, I messed up on that number there. We're putting money, fifty thousand towards that. Uh, grants to nonprofits, we gave, as you know, we gave city, uh, State Theater forty thousand dollars last year. We're looking to help like the Signal Museum and other nonprofits who may not be part of, um, Crayola Experience. Uh, Bank Street Walkway is a hundred thousand dollars. Bike sharing, we're looking to put our bike sharing program in place this year, and that's a twenty thousand dollar contribution. So those all fall under tourism develop, which is, um, job creation and ability to bring people to Easton to spend money. Uh, under our capital projects, which mu- most of it comes into the capital budget, you will see the Humor Bridge. We've already spent a million dollars. Um, but we're looking to put a million dollars into that bridge. Hopefully, it'll come in less. The Route Six Eleven, guide rail is in there for eight hundred thousand. The South Sick Graves improvements, the Center Square improvements, the Wood Avenue improvements, and then capital, uh, purchases for the fleet replacement for Department of Public Works, Police and Fire. You see Fire, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, so Fire has about almost three million dollars worth of, uh, money that we're gonna use to improve the Fire Department, whether it be the facilities or the fleet. And then one person to be hired, uh, to be paid plus three years of benefits, um, starting either late this year or the beginning of next year to, uh, run the programs and make sure that the guidelines are being followed, especially when it starts to giving like small business assistance, et cetera. So that is yours to take home and, and look through. We'll start talking about it at our committee meeting in two weeks. Um, and, uh, if you have any questions between then or now and then, you can certainly, um, contact me and email me or phone call because most of this is strictly the, from the staff input and our input at our meetings. Go ahead. Trade me? Why? Oh, that was the one I printed out for myself. Yeah, it makes it hard to read, huh?
Yeah.
All right, you take that. I'll take these.
Um, Thirteenth Street and Bushkill, they just put in surveying today.
Thirteenth and Bushkill, yes, that's part of the Simone Silk Mill, uh, improvements that they are responsible for. The pedestrian walkway, uh, the improvements of pedestrian access and the interchange.
Yeah, they, they surveyed it today, so the, the pins are in the ground for the.
Oh, good.
So, may, maybe having something happen there relatively soon.
One thing they could do is take down the Forks Discount Store because their furniture's been for sale, uh, going out of business for, for three years.
Oh, there's a new one, though.
Huh?
There's a new sign up.
Yeah, Cheese Whiz Kids. I took them down. They're in my, they're in the back of my car. I took them down. They're not even in Easton business. So I took them down. Uh, moving on, is there anything else? Anyone? Moving on, there's no correspondence. Someone finished business, new business, Madam Clark. Oh, I'm sorry, lose. Mr. Campos.
No, it's okay. Um.
You're on the agenda that, that we're actually adding it to the new meeting format, so then I won't ever forget it.
Um, well, this one's an important item. Um, so it, it, the mayor and I, um, talked about this, and the mayor's aware that, uh, I have weekly parking meetings, um, with all the different stakeholders within the city, city government, that is. As we all know, um, parking management is not centralized per se, so what we, what we're doing is meeting as a team, and it's uncovering just a lot of, um, issues in that, first of all, we're, 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 we're making a system, very, trying to make it transparent, and then we're looking at the issues. So one of the items that, um, that, that came up was, you know, parking as a, as a whole, um, specifically not only structured parking, but on-street parking. Um, and as we were going through the numbers, uh, we realized we had, um, approximately five hundred and ninety um, parking spaces in, uh, areas, um, where, uh, permit parkers, on-street permit parkers in the downtown are permitted to park. Um, and that's, that's great, um, except for the fact, then we went ahead and counted the permits and got to six hundred and thirty. So it's five ninety to six thirty. Um, now, uh, there's, there's, there's pressure on the system, but it's not every day, cause, and we can monitor that by phone calls and anecdotally, you know, word of mouth and complaints that we get, et cetera. The mayor may hear it. We get complaints at, at, at the office, at the Traffic Division and, and the PD, and wherever they may come in. So they trickle in, but it's not, uh, at times overly aggressive. Um, one of the items that we're concerned about is this number, is that we're at five ninety, um, spaces, and the total right now permits are six hundred and thirty. So we started to drill down a little bit more to understand how the system works. Um, and, um, unfortunately, right now, um, the system is not overly efficient. This is a, a legacy system. This is the way we've been doing business for years. Um, so we're trying to think of ways creatively on how we can use some of our other applications so we can monitor, um, this count, this six hundred and thirty count, which is a fixed count, by the way. So that's a problem because it's not always fixed. This is, oh, this is dynamic, meaning on a monthly basis, this changes, but we don't necessarily see it. And one of the reasons why you don't see it is because someone pays for the whole permit for the year. So that does not take into consideration if someone leaves. Someone can move from the downtown. I know someone, I happen to know an individual who moved from the downtown because their, their, their information was on Facebook, and they moved to another part of town. But essentially, then that permit stays with that vehicle so they can park downtown. They don't live in the downtown anymore, but they have now a, a, a parking pass to stay there. So the question was, how do, how do, how do we account for this? And we don't right now. Um, so I asked for an audit of, of the, um, all of our current parkers. I essentially do what the finance department does and make phone calls. This is old-school Easton way when Ann McPeak, McPeak would make phone calls to folks. Um, and then they would just work with the individual, and usually we would end up with a positive result. So we're gonna end up calling, and we're gonna start this process soon, to make sure that we're, uh, vetting this list. This is not an efficient way of managing the system. We're, we're, we're looking at other ways. The issue then becomes, um, are we oversubscribed? Um, yes and no. I mean, it's hard to tell. Um, we, we know that, that, um, six hundred and thirty vehicles, those permits are not, um, are not in the downtown parked necessarily at one given time. There's always some sort of vacancy rate. But we don't know how, what, what that vacancy rate looks like. Um, we know that that vacancy rate increases during the day when these folks go to work. Um, and, you know, we know it decreases certainly at night and on the weekends. But that's part of the problem. Those are, those are two blind spots that I have. Um, so I wanted to bring this issue to city council, understand that right now, I asked, um, the Traffic Division that if there are net new requests to come on in, that we take our time in processing those net new requests. This is not a, a hole or a cap. This is a, an opportunity to put the brakes on, look at the request, go through the list, and make sure that, um, we're, we're appropriately, uh, bringing onboard new, um, requests for permits. And by the way, this doesn't necessarily happen all the time. This is not like a growth type of, um, of, uh, of, of service that we have here in the city. It's usually fairly stagnant. Um, and usually the requests that we have are renewals, so these are people that have been downtown. We do not, and we should not, right now, um, be stopping any renewals. Those are the only ones, uh, requests that, um, I've talked to the Traffic Division not to, um, stop. They should process those immediately because they're already in the count, and we know the system can hand them, handle them, uh, generally. Um, but on new requests, I've asked the Traffic Division to slow down, put the brakes while we go through this process, and we can vet this out carefully. I talked to the mayor. The mayor wanted me to bring this up to city council's attention because it is an ordinance, and I wanted to have a, um, dialogue with you all on it, and perhaps maybe get some direction, or at least, um, you know, just discuss it.
Well, you need to talk to the Traffic Department because that's not what hap- that's not what's happening.
Well, that's, that's, so today.
I heard you talked to Lieutenant Homoki just now, but that's not what people were told the last three days.
Well, today there was an issue with someone who has a renewal, didn't get the renewal, and, and I was literally on the phone with Lieutenant Homoki, and he acknowledged with the mayor there that that was not our discussion. So something happened in the breakdown. And I, I, you know, I, um, and, and what I made, what I realized, and I talked to the lieutenant, is that, you know, we need, we need some better training. I don't know what kind of skill sets um, our folks have, um, especially when you provide new information. It depends on how that information was provided. Um, so him and I are gonna talk about it, um, tomorrow in a little bit more depth, depth, probably head down to the, um, to the Traffic Division. But I just wanted to explain, yeah, that's an issue that was brought to the mayor's attention. He brought it to my attention. I clarified it with him, but now this is an issue that I'm bringing to, um, the rest of city council.
Well, I looked like a fool because I was on Facebook and say, no, that there's, city council's made no changes to the downtown parking permit ordinance.
No, you're.
And they can't take it into their own hands of, of doing something that we didn't authorize them to do.
You're, you're absolutely right. Um, but like anything, it's, you know, it's, we're managing through this process.
The only thing I did do is I allowed the blue zone to park in the red zone because of the construction.
Yeah.
Um, and it is something that city council's gonna have to wrestle with in the fall. I mean, starting next, in two weeks, because my order's only good for ninety days. But we're gonna have to wrestle with it because it's, it's getting out of hand. I believe very strongly that the new developers who will have to, and, and Mr. Narowski is here, they have to provide parking. When they come before the planning commission, they have to tell us where they're parking or zoning. And we've provided parking for them in our garages, and we can continue to do that. That means that their tenants should not be allowed, in my mind, to get a residential parking permit. If you're living in one of the new apartment buildings and your, your landlord, like the Palmeroy Building, they buy, uh, tickets for the, the garage, they should not be allowed to get a hundred dollar ticket, a hundred dollar permit, because what happens is, I have a hundred dollar permit, a hundred bucks, you know, I'll give it, I'll pay it, and I'll park on the street. But your landlord's providing the parking in the garage, and they're not parking there. So you have many more than the six hundred and twenty or six hundred and thirty. I mean, and that's my concern. I think, and I'll work with the Solicitor's Office to find out how we can do that. If you recall, I was trying, the one meeting we had at St. John's, the people brought up, well, my house becomes less valued because I don't have parking. I, I will agree with that. So I've, if there's a way that we can designate owner occupied can get a permit, but renters can't, I think we do it by saying, you're, before that building was, the Commodore was built, he had to provide parking. And the parking was provided here, here, and here. And that's where you park.
Right. No, and I, and I, Mayor, we're, we're seeing that. It's a totally different dynamic, and I, I agree with you. In fact, with, um, to add, to add more, as we're going through, uh, this exercise and all this development that's occurring in the city, one eighty-five South Third Street, for example, and we talked about, I talked about this vacancy. This is, this is an interesting topic. Um, and one eighty-five South Third Street, I asked them to crunch the numbers and work with their parking consultant um, to look at what the potential vacancy is gonna be in their garage during the day, and if there's an opportunity that we can use those vacancies. So, um, and, and we're working with other folks, um, on that concept as well. It's a different concept, um, that was brought to our attention probably this year due to just trying to troubleshoot a lot of.
And we're looking at potentially the problem on weekends when the, the, the apartment dwellers are still here, so you don't have those vacancies.
Well, the vacancies.
The vacancy's much lower.
Right.
So we're looking at, instead of building garages, actually moving people from remote lots, either by a tram or another trolley. Right now, we have the trolley going Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, primarily doing a loop, hop on, hop off, primarily to fit, for people who are parking further away from the business district to be able to get to the. primarily for people who are parking further away from the business district to be able to get to the business district. Dr. Ruggles.
Anyway, that's the issue.
I just had a suggestion, maybe when you're doing your data analysis. I think it'd be interesting to determine how many permits are registered at a particular address. Okay, so, you know, somebody have three, four, five, you know, permits at their address. The other thing that I did have a question on is relative to parking is, are we all prepared for our transition on Northampton Street? For the diagonal parking?
Could happen as early as Monday night. They're looking at doing it next week.
What do you mean by, "Are we prepared"?
I meant, you know, meters, I mean, I don't want us to say, "Okay, now we can do it, now we, oh, we have to wait for, you know, equipment or whatever." Okay, we're ready to go with that?
We actually just received, we just received a shipment of a lot of new meters.
Okay.
The meters is not an issue.
Not an issue.
The biggest hurdle, I think, in this one was the ordinance.
It's blacking out the white lines that are there now and putting in the new lines. And Dave was out there and I was at, one of the merchants there was at me, they were really looking forward to it. And I was told it was gonna be as soon as Monday or Tuesday.
Right, that's what we're expecting. I mean, we don't see any other barriers.
I, just as an aside, when I was on vacation last, two weeks ago, I was in West Bend, Wisconsin, and their main street is exactly like that, and it works very well.
It's downtown, but...
It worked very, very well there, so. It was, I was like, "Oh, wow, this is what's gonna happen in Easton," you know, so.
That's good to know. So, Mayor, listen, with that individual, there was someone that, it was brought to the mayor's attention. The mayor's a great advocate, he'll certainly let us know when there's an issue, and he did, and so we'll take care of it and I'll take care of it with Lieutenant Hamoki.
All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving along to new business.
We have Bill Number 30 being introduced by Mr. Ettinger, and it's approving a lease agreement between the City of Easton and Two Rivers Kayaking.
So introduced.
We have Bill Number 31 being introduced by Mr. Milan, which would amend Section 3916 of Chapter 39, Council Rules and Regulations. And Bill Number 32 being introduced by Mr. Milan, amending Section 62-1 of Chapter 61, Fire Department. We have a resolution being introduced by...
Hold on, Dr. Ruggles.
I just wanted to know the reasoning behind going from monthly to annual report?
Because we haven't gotten a report in three years.
What's that?
We haven't gotten a report in three years since Chief Bass left. So, I mean, we're not getting monthly reports now, so why have it in the ordinance if they're not doing it?
I think the council should make them do it.
I was gonna say, if...
We haven't gotten one.
If it's in the ordinance, they should be doing it.
Right, but, I mean, for three years now.
We just talked about this about, not even three weeks ago, that I haven't seen it. And then he presented one to me for, showed 206 incidents, and of those 206 incidents, only five were fires.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I mean, it's an administrative thing, but if they're not, I mean, we haven't got one in three years now.
I think you bring up a good point, Councilman, I think we should stick to monthlies and make sure that we get them.
I mean, I'm fine with the mayor, but I just, I mean, they're not doing it now, so, I mean, I feel like we're, you know, we're not funding ordinance and...
Just because they're not doing it, are they then not going to do the yearly report? And then they're not gonna do any report and, you know...
You have to talk to the chief about that, like, I don't know.
If it's in the ordinance, they should be doing it.
Well, but it's, but it's in, but they're not doing it though, so it's kinda like redundant. They're not doing it. They don't come to us for the report, so why have it in the ordinance then? That's my belief.
That's, I think that's a...
We'll have an answer for you in two weeks.
I mean, here's the reality, like, I don't want to debate these ordinances now, I'm just introducing it. If he doesn't want it, we can vote against it or we can discuss in two weeks. Like, I don't want to debate these ordinances now.
I would, I'd like to. I'd like to see monthlies.
Me too.
Although I don't get a monthly report for police, but I think the monthly for fire, we should be watching both of those departments.
I mean, if we're gonna have data, like, we don't get monthly reports from anything at this point, so...
I agree with Councilman. Okay.
We have a resolution being introduced by Mr. Ettinger, which approves a contract between the City of Easton and MJ Rider Associates for laboratory services at the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved.
Moved in second discussion. Roll call.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panta?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ettinger?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
At this point in the meeting, we're not publicly commenting on any specific item concerning the City of Easton. Anyone like to address City Council? Come up to the podium, give your name, address, and you have five minutes.
Please, just, Arthur Rabbit's 144 Church Street. I'd like to know a little more about the state versus the city on the not taking care of the Route 611. What's the story about that?
Well, it's a debate we get to with the state all the time. They own the, Route 611 is a state highway and the guide rail stops people from going into the river. And the guide rails were put in by them when they redid 611 about 30 years ago, or 25 years ago, whenever it was. And now they're telling us we have to replace the guide rails. And the wall that those guide rails are on and holds up the road is really, it needs work. It needs, it needs to be, what's happening is, during the shifting, when that road's shifting, our sanitary sewer lines are breaking. And then we gotta shut down the road and direct traffic up over Lafayette Street to Cattell. And it's very dangerous, especially on Cattell Street, because it's not that wide. So we're gonna put in for that for the infrastructure bill. That'll be one of our priorities.
And that's a pressurized sewer line.
It's a pressurized sewer line.
And that, when it breaks, that means it's...
It goes in the river.
It's bad.
I personally saw them inspecting that group. Since they inspected, like, "Stop the ass," they go, "What are you guys doing here? You're walking on us." And they said, "We're inspecting the wall, see if it's slipping or not."
They did about two years ago. It was the last time we had a break. We've had three breaks in the last 10 years.
But the townships don't have to do that.
But the townships don't have to do that. Here's the problem with the state. The state treats cities much differently than it treats Palmer Township or any township. In the townships, the states maintain right-of-way. In the cities, they only maintain curb-to-curb. So that guide rail is definitely in the right-of-way. And if, once it gets to Forks Township, they take care of it. But once it crosses into the city line, they say it's our responsibility. And we just don't have the money to fix their road. And they're gonna get sued when somebody leaves the road, they leave a state road and go into a state waterway. So we're fighting for them. We're fighting for the city, actually. Hello?
Okay. Couple weeks ago, we...
Name and address.
Oh, Loretta Williams, 435 West Wilkes Ferry Street in Pennsylvania. I lived there 51 years, day after Thanksgiving this year. Okay, we have disability signs that we had paid for, okay? Why can't, we, when, we have to move our cars, okay? People have six cars, three cars, five cars. We have to go all the way down either by Shaw or Cole Street, and we can't walk that. I mean, it's hard for us to walk.
You have a handicap spot in front of your house.
That's what we're trying to see, if they could, like, exempt...
Oh, on street sweeping?
Yes, because we've got, one that's next to us, they have a driveway. They have six cars, okay? Not even an inspection, on the street. Every house there has more than two cars, okay? I have one, she has one, but we have a disability. And Mrs. Joan Beck and John Beck, he was a police officer, a mail carrier, they have, she has very hard times walking. Now, I was talking to a bunch of people and we got a petition up. And they were, they agreed that us should not have to be doing this because we get out of breath. I talked to cancer six times, and I just can't walk that far anymore.
So it's just a day of the week that you have street sweeping?
I have Tuesdays and Thursdays. I'm on a Tuesday sign. Okay, I don't understand why we should be exempt. I mean, we keep our property clean in front. I mean, if you go over on the 400 block of Wilkes Ferry Street, I...
Oh, I know, I know that.
I've got another person next to us.
I know that person, we both had problems with that person.
Okay, 16 people are living there, and she's renting out rooms. It's not a hotel.
No.
Okay, and right of way, I get the blame for everything. And they park, they're parking and fire, I fire though, okay? They're doing this deliberately. And they'll sometimes park, like, right into where my park, my spot is. Like, you know, you can't back up because there's other people next door has two cars. And we go out to sweep, I hold my cane like this, and I sweep with my little thing. I mean, I've lived there 51 years. I mean, what they should be doing is finding the people that don't clean their sidewalks and stuff. I mean, I can't even do my lawn anymore. I have a guy come down. If I see anything, he'll come and spray it. I mean, I don't think we should have to move, but they said there's not that many in the city of handicap places.
Oh, there's more every year. I mean, there's, yeah, there's probably, there's probably several hundred.
Yeah, now, there's only three to a street.
No, we've always, we've always allowed it, we exempt that.
Yes, three to a street.
No, we always allow more.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
It has to come to City Council.
It has to come to City Council for approval. The Board of Health can't approve it until we do.
So I think we should be exempt and let them go around because, I mean, we can't walk...
It's difficult for us to move the vehicles, and it's, we're moving them twice, to put them away and then bring them back. It's very difficult.
And I have anxiety really, really bad, okay? And now, I get out of breath so much. Matter of fact, I'm going to the doctor tomorrow and then I'm going to a chiropractor on Friday at 5:00. I just...
Is your sister taking you? Is your sister gonna take you?
No, my nephew's taking me.
Oh, okay, all right.
My nephew's taking me. Yeah, we were in a bad accident on 22th and September, or July 29th.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
He was taken out by squat. She was out on the backboard. I thought I was gonna have a heart attack because the belt was so tight. I hit my head, cracked my arm, my knee.
This is Barbara So's sister.
It's like, you know my sister Barbara So, yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, I mean, this'll come up, we'll get it to the... We'll give your petition, I saw it in City Council offices, we'll get it to the clerk and then we'll address it in the next meeting.
Do we have to be here?
No.
Okay, now, when you do, are they gonna send us something to say exempt, or are they gonna tell if we do get it? Are they gonna tell the guy?
Send a letter out or something?
Send a letter out or something, say...
Well, you can call my office in a couple of weeks and we'll let you know, but I'm, I don't, I mean, we're not gonna, we could, I guess we could send it to all the people. We know who they are.
Right, right, right. Now, Mrs. Beck, Joan.
I know who she is.
And Betty Hart, you said, uh, 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 Clark, okay?
Police officer.
And if you would've heard the carrying on of those people about us doing it, we were, we were, we were doing everybody. We were doing you, we were doing the City of Easton, we were doing the cops, we were doing this. He came over and he told me he lost his tire, okay, the boy in the car accident. Well, when they left, that's when it started, and I called Tom Wagner, Kane, the police officer. He lived, grew up on Main Street.
Tim Wagner, Tim Wagner, his dad was John.
He said, "They ain't gonna bother you anymore." Well, they're still bothering.
All right, we'll take a look at, I can only, I can't, we'll address, City Council can address the street sweeping, the administration can't, but we can do it here.
All right, please, take the bus, because everybody's gonna get old like us.
I'm there, I'm there.
I'm there.
I'm around the corner.
I'm not in doubt, but I'm there.
I was playing on this left side of the accident, trying to get out on the right side when there's nothing to grab onto. It'd be a complete comedy, believe me, it would.
Okay, Loretta, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
So I'll call you, when's the next meeting?
Uh, not for two weeks.
Two weeks, the 11th, no, the 11th, 18th, 25th.
25th.
Yep.
Anyone else like to address City Council on any agenda, any non-agenda item that's, or agenda item that...
Yeah, increase the school tax for us.
I don't, we're not the school board.
I know.
City Council hasn't raised your taxes in 13 years. We haven't raised your taxes in 13 years.
I know, but the school...
Well...
What it should be, once you don't have any children, which I never did, we should've been frozen at 65.
Well, I think it should be 70. I think after 70, you shouldn't have to pay school taxes.
Well, a lot of them should get in social security at 65.
All right, is there anyone else? Miss, you just walked in, I can't tell who you are with your mask on. Do you want to address City Council? Okay, okay, all right. This is the end, this is the end. That's why, I figured you walked in for a reason.
So, I was wondering, name and address.
Name and address.
It's Andrea Suarez, 1232 Butler Street.
Could you spell your last name, please?
S-O-A-R-E-S.
Thank you.
My pleasure. I was just wondering what was in store for the kids when they go back to school? Like, I know that certain cities are requesting mandates for the masks, and I just wanted to know...
That's school board, we're not the school board. You have to go to a school board meeting. We don't, I don't even know what they're gonna do, I don't think they've announced it yet.
No, they haven't.
Easton hasn't announced what they're gonna make the kids do, whether elementary school, senior high school. Some schools are just elementary school, seniors don't have to wear masks, elementary school does. But...
We have, we have nothing to do.
Okay, no, that makes sense. I understand now, definitely, I know where to go. And then the second thing was in regards to recreation.
Yes.
Because I guess I missed it. If you could just give me an update on that, like, in regards to, you know, what do you currently have going on for younger kids, I'm gonna say, or planning to?
Well, obviously, in addition to organized sports, we're doing a number of clinics. We started doing a girls volleyball clinic. We're trying, we put together a basketball clinic. We're trying to get more clinics because we find kids aren't really getting involved in organized sports. I did have a complaint tonight about the uniforms, and I thought I addressed that, that, you know, I want, our, our sports team should have uniforms that are not the best, but certainly not the worst.
Yeah.
And apparently, the one group has things so faded that they can't even read the name of the team they're on. So, or the number. So we'll, we'll look into that. But we're looking, right now, we have a swim team, we have an eastern swim team that practices at Hyo Pool.
For what ages?
All ages.
Six. Oh, okay.
Six, one, up, yeah, we have, we have baseball.
I didn't see that one, okay.
Baseball, basketball, football, football's starting now, signups.
Cheerleading.
Cheerleading.
Well, okay, so my daughter's father came here to find out about cheerleading, but they said they had already done it. So, did they or did they not?
They started.
Okay, so it'd be too late.
Well, you know, you know what? If somebody wants to cheer or play baseball or football, it doesn't matter what the deadline, obviously you wanna make up your teams. But if a cheerleader, if a young girl shows up, I don't wanna deny her the opportunity.
Because that's what happened.
Well...
I would tell you to go to my website and call the director.
Yeah, call our office tomorrow.
Okay.
Call my office, 610-250-6610, and then we'll take care of it.
You're gonna write it down?
Okay, yes, please.
I mean, I just...
And she'll transfer you to the recreation.
Are you new to the, are you new to the city?
Actually, I am. My brother and I bought a house last year, beginning of COVID, right here on Butler.
Okay, well, then that's a good reason, good excuse. For Mr. Campus to tell Kevin. 250-6610.
Yeah, I came in here with my daughters at one time.
Yeah, remember that, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you so much, I appreciate all the time.
All right, thank you.
My pleasure.
Any other business coming for City Council? I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Moved in second. Roll call.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panta?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ettinger?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Thank you.